And open that up to this committee for discussion and comment.
Yes, thank you for having us, Jared Jackson, Colliers Project Leaders. I am here today with my team to give an update on the Winters. I am here joined with George Salome, JCI Johnson Controls, Rick Silva with JCI Johnson Controls, Kathy Ella Thorpe, SLAM Architects, Brian Wetzel, CES, the engineers, Bill Bryan, Gil Bain, Mike Arden, Peregrin, as well as Mike Vitrazello, the commissioning agent. So, we are going to give a quick overview and presentation of what happened, what steps we've taken over the past couple of weeks, some of the events that have happened over the past couple of weeks, and then our next steps moving forward. And with that, I will turn this over to, to Brian Wetzel.
Part of the team.
Can we bring that closer?
I can, I'll just have to unplug it and reconnect everything, sorry. There's only one outlet over here, but I can't.
Well, they can't see it.
We can make sure to read every point out loud as well, if that helps.
That would help, thank you.
Good evening, again, Brian Wetzel with Consulting Engineering Services. We felt the best way to give you an update from the last meeting of where we stand, progress that we made, meetings that we've had, is to go through the same PowerPoint presentation that we presented before. This diagram, I'm going to touch on it again, just to kind of as a refresher to what we discussed before, and again, had it available in case we want to go back to it for discussion. To me, I like to see diagrams like this. It helps me to point to things, so we have it available if we need be. Again, this diagram, there's a VRF condensing unit up on the roof. That's the item on the top of the page there. That, for our purposes, is the air conditioning system. Sometimes I refer to that as a compressor unit, a compressor condensing unit, to confuse some terms. Has refrigerant piping that goes down to a coil at the VRF indoor unit. That's the coil that's highlighted blue. And then the lineup of the airflow from left to right is the cooling coil, the air conditioning coil from the VRF unit, a fan, and then a hot water coil. And the synopsis that happened twice is that the air conditioning system provided such cold air, 17 to 20 degrees, that it froze the hot water coil in two different cases. So if we go to the next slide, again, these are the same points that we went through last time, but I want to give you an update on those. We have also some enhancements to some of these items. We, we've had many, many, multiple meetings. I want to let you know that there's a lot going on behind the scenes. In my office alone, I can't tell you the number of meetings we've had trying to go through these items, understands the best mitigation actions and recommendations. I know the contractors have had a lot of meetings, and we've had a lot of meetings interacting with each other. So this list, even though this was presented last time, has been gone through many, many, multiple times amongst many meetings as far as an update, and some enhancements that I'll mention on. So to lock out the compressors at the compressor condensing units, the VRF units on the roof was discussed last time. When we presented that last time, our understanding from Daikin that the way to do that was to go up on the roof. We talked about going to a little keypad and locking that out, or wiring this ABC terminal. Well, the Daikin representative was out here twice, I believe, with the factory on the phone, and then realizing that the model number of the heat recovery unit that is on the roof is not one you're able to do that with on the roof. So we got together, we said, what else can we do to lock out these compressors, knowing that that's what we need to do? So we worked together with the building management system in JCI, and they are now locked out through the Johnson Controls BMS system. This is as of at least a week, two weeks ago. We've been monitoring this system through alarms, which is the last item. We've had no instances of temperature sensors or alarms going off to indicate that it's going on. Now, we all knew that we were doing safety measures above and beyond that. So again, other mitigating actions to go above and beyond to make sure there's protection is putting propylene glycol in the system, inspecting all the hot water coils, and again, the alarms. All these items, including other items, are 100% done as of last week. They've been done, and we've been watching the system to make sure there's been no alarms otherwise. Some quick enhancements, we talked about.
Can we jump in as we go through the slides? Well, we're making reference to things being done that we were told were done three weeks ago.
Mr. Schott, I had that as a note.
No, I was going to jump in, but last time, and with the hour, I just think they should run through that presentation. I understand your frustration, but I, because I wrote down a note too on something he stated. But if you guys don't mind, just go through your presentation, and then we're going to have a chance.
Yep, that's fine, fair enough, yep. Some enhancements, as we've been working along on these mitigation actions, realized we have propylene glycol in the system, and we need to be monitoring that. So we've worked with Peregrin, the mechanical contractor, to make sure they have their chemical treatment coming out every three months to monitor that. Something, again, something we've thought of. This is something we need to do to make sure the systems are safe. We've expanded on the set points of some of the temperature to provide a broader band, bigger safety and margin. As we've gone through this, and we're getting less and less alarms on the systems that we're monitoring, we realize we could do this and have an added safety of an alarm. Also realizing that, talking with Daikin and VRF, and Daikin and Johnson Controls are discussing the systems in more detail. They have a direct back net connection now, and we're exploring more options to be able to try to add more safeties, and also be able to troubleshoot and monitor more points. Kind of leading a little bit more into our recommendations, so. So next slide, we'll go through this, and then we can open up the floor, of course. So our recommendations, this is a new slide. I'm kind of fine tuning what our memo was. We have a lot of detailed items. This is a high-flying scenario of our recommendations. We're asking them to review the equipment. These are sensors and valves, things that you can put your hardware, you can put your hands on to, and sequences of operations of these following systems. The Daikin VRF systems, the BMS system, Johnson Controls system, and the interfaces between those two systems. We have, again, have had a lot of discussions on these. Even though we just, as of a week ago, came up with a first detailed list of preliminary recommendations, as of two weeks ago, a lot of these items were already being addressed and have been addressed. By the time we wrote the memo, they were already done. They haven't been checked. But again, I just want to reinforce that things are ongoing and happening. And on our recommendation is that these items have comprehensive commissioning to check them line item by line item. We have other recommendations above and beyond this, some miscellaneous recommendations, and again, are continuing to add to our recommendations.
Any other slides?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino first.
So you mentioned locking out the compressors. But three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, the meeting at the admin building, we assured everybody that the compressors had already been locked out. Right, that there was no chance, even if it called for cold air, that it would send cold air. And then we found out a week later or so that that wasn't the case. Right, that the units were still calling for cold air. So, all of these reactionary recommendations, I think, are, who did we ask to review the equipment, the hardware, the sequence? Who's reviewing all of that?
So this, this list particularly here is?
Yes.
So this is a team effort. There's Gil Bain as a general contractor. There's a mechanical contractor, and then below them are subcontractors.
So the review of the equipment is, is being conducted by who? Gil Bain?
So it's going to be a joint effort between all of the parties involved? So, so Daikin, which is the manufacturer that supplied the unit and brought it to the roof, will be there. JCI, the programmers, who we have here as well, who manage the BMS system, will be there. Peregrin Mechanical, another aspect of the subcontractors, who are the mechanical contractors who installed these systems, as well as, obviously, Brian CES, which is the engineer, will be reviewing them, and we have commissioning agents as well on hand reviewing them. So the entire team will be getting together and reviewing all of the findings and results, and coming up with their synopsis, and making sure that we can move forward.
What's the timeline for that review?
So, I don't know that I have a definite timeline right now, and we can speak a little bit to it. But one thing I do want to say is that about a week or so ago, we received the memo on what we would like our preliminary investigations and review of the system to be. A good portion of these have already been reviewed. There are still a good portion that need to continue to get reviewed. We have a couple of dates set up to continue reviewing these with getting Daikin, JCI, commissioning, and everybody to the table at the same time. Obviously, we are all working diligently on our own and also coming together.
So have we started reviewing the equipment in the sequence, or have we not?
We have, yes.
And who's, who's doing it?
It's been a combination of, everybody has been, everybody on the team that I just mentioned has been reviewing.
And it's ongoing, so when do you?
It is ongoing.
When do you expect that you'll have something definitive to share with this committee? Because, because what's happening is, you folks are standing up there at these meetings and telling us that this is going on, and we're doing this, and commission, and then the meeting goes away, and then a couple of days later, we get an email. Oop, FYI, just found out this, and. So, we, we need to start putting some concrete timelines together. When are we going to get the reports? Who's in charge of it? The teams you mentioned all have skin in the game here. So everybody's looking at the same reports. Who's looking at it on our behalf? Is it Colliers?
I am, and I'm also putting them together on a link so that everybody from the school committee can review any and every documentation that comes in. But I am as well, yes.
Right, but you understand my frustration, that you're communicating something publicly at a meeting, and then two or three days later, it's being disseminated amongst the committee privately, that what was communicated publicly wasn't actually correct.
I, I do understand those frustrations, and I truly believe when we presented to the committee last time, we were under the impression that the system was locked out, and then some of the events that had happened and alarms that had gone off led us to investigate further, to which we found that the locking out system.
And I guess that, that's exactly my point, Jared. We've been at this issue now for well over a month, month plus. February 4th, I think, was the first incident. And we're communicating things, we're making assumptions, but how did we not look at this stuff from the get-go? Why are we talking about commissioning it now? Because we had the issue and it's been repaired, and it's going to go through a recommissioning? Or, we were told, we were told by, by the same team that's standing up here that these units don't have alarm capabilities. That was after the first issue, that there was no alarm notification to us because the units don't have that capacity, that capability. But once the second one blew, oh, lo and behold, we can put alarms on the thing, and we can get notifications, and we can lock out the VRF unit. And no, we can't lock it out. And the whole thing is turning into what I, just a disaster. And I feel like this committee has been patient. We've invested a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of resources on this. I think we've been patient with our team, but my patience is, is out, and it's been exhausted. And another issue at Winters, for the next 10 years, is going to be too many. So I want some assurances and some timelines. When we're going to see some things, we don't even know what caused the problem. Right? Because we threw out the other, three weeks ago, that it may have been an open window. So, you guys got to get your arms around this, and we're going to start getting answers that are, that are concrete, locked and loaded, and everybody signs off on it. Because this, these having public conversations and then getting private emails is dumb. The next private email I get is going out to every media resource that I have. And I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have an independent commissioning agent working with us?
We have, yes. The independent commissioning agent is through Colliers' contract, through Colliers' commissioning.
But is that an independent? Because it's tied with you, and you have skin in the game too.
I don't know that I would call it independent in that, but I can say that Colliers' commissioning branch is separate from the Colliers' project leaders. They, they do not manage the projects the way that Colliers' project leaders do as an owner's rep. They are specifically for commissioning. But I wouldn't call them independent. They are tied with our contract.
Superintendent?
So, I want to say that I share many of the same frustrations that the committee is sharing, and I hate sending those emails just as much as you hate receiving them.
Please, it's not a reflection on you. You're communicating the information.
So, but I do want to let you know that I did reach out to both RIDE and our trust to follow up with that exact same question about who's looking at it on our end. And both of them, each independent of one another, indicated that Colliers' project leaders is the one that is supposed to be arranging for and vetting all the work and making sure that they're fighting, if you will, on our behalf. I have communicated with Jared my expectations for certain things, our expectations for certain things, and he has been communicating that with Bill, and Bill, and Brian, and Kathy, and all of those individuals. But the thing is, we do need the answers, and I, I agree. We need the answers, and to hear one more, oh, that didn't work, or, oh, that didn't work exactly the way we had wanted it, it's, it's exceptionally frustrating. And I think that what I need to continue to say is I need to trust the experts, that they're giving us the best information that they know at the time, and that the layered mitigation strategies, they were layered for redundancy sake, and they're working. Right, even though one didn't and one did, the glycol in the system is absolutely been foolproof to allow for those heating coils to not fail at this time. The other instances, the, the blocking out or locking out of the Daikin unit, they did work to remedy that, but I agree that we need an answer here. Why isn't that working? Who's going to make it work? So a timeline would be amazing.
Ms. Grant?
So, you know, I have to be honest. It's not just the air conditioning heating system now. We're, we're getting emails every day about different things that are popping up in these schools. We just had a classroom close because of spores. So, so, well, like, seriously, it's not. And we could get another email tomorrow. And then what if we have a heat wave? This is New England. We can't even turn the air conditioner on. I know supposedly there's natural air, but it's the natural air that's hot, that people will end up opening windows. So we have a whole system we can't use. We have some classrooms we can't use. We have others that are starting to reclose because they weren't, I want to say cleaned properly? Like, like, what's going on with that, too?
So, so I'll let, I'll let Bill Bryan talk a little bit about the, the hygienist investigation that we received. But it, it was brought to our attention that a couple of rooms had a musty odor, so we went in to do additional air sampling. And in that, we did not close a classroom. The air sampling tests that came back stated that the classroom in question that had some elevated levels is still completely safe and can be operational and occupied. But I'm happy to let Bill speak a little bit to that if you'd like.
Lisa, the email you sent out to us, didn't it state that we closed the classroom?
Was the recommendation? So they could do the functionality that they wanted to do, but it wasn't required at that moment because the room was occupiable and safe.
So, is, did we close it so they could do that?
We haven't not closed that room as yet.
As of yet?
No, we needed a plan of attack for the work that needed to be done.
So, so we haven't closed the room as of yet? Which makes me say, or think to myself, if my child was in that classroom, and I was sitting here listening to that, I would be like, yeah, but, but my kid was sitting there today. Yeah, like, come on, guys. This is, this is embarrassing. This is, you don't know who to believe. Like Mr. Chavino said, one day we're hearing one thing, the other day we're hearing another thing. And, you know, I remember the first meeting, Bill Wright was at. Oh, this is a fluke, this is a fluke. That then we have a press conference. Everyone did a great job patting everyone on the back. And look at where we are now. We're back with even more problems. Come on, guys. We have kids in there, kids in these schools, that need to be educated. And we need to know, we need to really know. You know, you see here and you tell us they're safe. Do we really know if they are safe? Because you tell us one thing, but then two days later, we heard that there was a, an alarm that went off right after we had a press conference saying the, the building was safe and all the kids could come back to school. Like, like, how do you, how do we support you guys in what you say when a parent comes to us? Because I know me, I don't feel good about this situation. And I, I think it's extremely embarrassing. And I, after, you know, like I said, well, the acting superintendent just said I would not send, if my child is in that classroom, I wouldn't send my kid to school tomorrow. Because like she said, we haven't closed that room yet. What does that even mean? You know, this is, this is really, it, it's, it's really embarrassing. And it scares me for the, the school that we just demolished, you know, what the future could bring, you know? But this is, you know, but I guess we're here where we are right now, and we can just hope that you guys, you know, really, you know, work to make this better, not worse, because it's getting worse every day.
So let me address, I apologize, I'm not feeling well. Let me address the comment regarding the, the classroom. The industrial hygienist, who's nationally certified, who established all the protocols for the cleaning and remediation work, inspected rooms, tested rooms, and determined that they were available for reuse before the school opened. Subsequently, we were informed that there were a few rooms, three rooms, where there were comments from teachers, I believe, about musty odors. So we contacted the industrial hygienist. He had a representative come back and do additional testing. Unfortunately, when one goes through a situation like we've been through, having those types of issues arise post-reoccupancy are not uncommon. So you go back and you test. The testing determined the two rooms were fine. It indicated that the third room had an elevated level of spores relative to the outside air sample that was taken as a control measure. There are no state or federal guidelines for spores for indoor air quality. So this was a recommendation of the industrial hygienist, knowing it's a public school, that we do additional cleaning in that room. In order to do the additional cleaning, we can't do it during the day when teaching and learning is occurring. So if it was to be done as expeditiously as we were prepared to do it, the space would have to be unoccupied. But it does not require that. The industrial hygienist says that the space is safe to use as it is, and we have offered that the room can continue to be used this week. We will clean it Friday night. We will do air scrubbing through the weekend, and the room can be available next week without any interruption. No one has to move a thing out of the room. So that's where that particular matter is.
So if my child goes to that school, and my child has asthma, and my child sits in that classroom tomorrow, they're going to be comfortable and fine, and everything's going to be great? Because the hygienist said we didn't need to do this quickly.
I can't answer your, your question professionally. I'm, I'm telling you what the report says from the hygienist that has been provided to you.
Because we need to think about these children that are in those classrooms. We need to make sure that, we don't know what, upfront, what their medical needs are or what's going on. And nowadays, a lot of children do have asthma, and that could really, you know, I remember on the first Monday, Jim asked me to go over to the school. We were sitting in the conference room. Billy, you were there, the guy from the trust was there. And I stated, wow, this is a brand-new school, and what's going to happen is, everyone's going to say after the fact, everyone's going to say, oh, this mold, there was water, this mold. And you and the guy from the trust said, we'll have proof that there isn't any, any problems with smells or, or, or things like that. And now we, we, we do have the smells. We, we do have the situations. And we have children in those schools who do suffer, not just the parent, the kids, but the staff, that suffer from certain things that keep them from going outside or being in certain places from the spring. You know, this all has to be taken into accountability for this. We need to think about all of it. We really do, before we put any of these kids or keep any of these children in their classrooms.
Ms. Bruno?
I have a question for you. I did read the report, and I did read about scrubbing the air and it being done on a Friday and through the weekend. My question to you is, because we do have rooms that you left the gaps under the window sills to ensure that there was additional drying time on some of the wood. Will Gil Bain have a hygienist come in and check all of our rooms on a monthly basis until all our rooms are clean?
I'm going to, I'm going to give a simple answer and say, yes. I'm going to ask that I confer with the hygienist regarding your request, and we'll look at what the hygienist says is an appropriate protocol, and I'll come back and share that with the superintendent.
But for security, I mean.
We are not.
I did ask at the first rupture that all of the coils be inspected, and everybody told me no. Until we had the second one, and a week after that, everybody decided that you would inspect all of the coils. Now I'm asking you, because we know that walls were put up, even though they were vented, because some of the woodwork was moist and needed to finish drying, I am asking that every room in that school, and not because they were affected by water, every room in that school be tested for air quality every month until a significant period of time has passed that we can ensure people that there is no mold. Because mold grows slowly, doesn't have to grow fast, and it may take six months for it to show up to the hygienist. And this is what I'm asking, and it's not really an ask. It's what is needed by this school district. By this school district to ensure the safety of our students and our teachers. So would you speak with your hygienist and tell her, this is my ask, not ask, this is what we want?
I understand you, Amy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chavino? I I believe the report that the hygienist sent over indicated that. In in his or her professional opinion, there wasn't a need to further test. The air going on, and I think I think we need to be careful about saying. We're going to test air quality for X amount of months going forward, only that. I mean, did I misread the report? Or did the hygienist report that that you sent over, Bill, indicate that? They're saying there is no need to further test. The school because they've already done it twice. And they haven't found but for one room elevated spore levels that is gonna be addressed, so. I I don't know what getting.
They've only tested three rooms.
Well, that's not what that, that's not what the report says.
On two, on two occasions, they tested many more than two rooms. Um, so that was the third occasion when they tested the three rooms.
I think this is where some of the confusion.
I understand.
I'm under the impression that the report we were given today indicates that. But for that one room, the school has been found to be. At at or below levels considered acceptable for schools. It's been tested twice and in their opinion, there's no benefit to testing it again. And now we're talking about testing it once a month and you're committing to it, Bill. And I, and my frustration is in three months from now, if we, if I hear that there hasn't been. A an air quality sampling at that school.
Mr. Chavino, um. As you've heard me say before, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I don't have a P after my name. But I'll share my personal opinion, which is what I've shared on other occasions in conversations.
Bill, I I don't wanna, I I.
No, I I I wanna say this, sir, no.
We're asking for your professional opinion, not your personal opinion, Bill. I need your professional opinion.
Well, but it's my professional opinion, sir, but not as the hygienist. Okay? Um. The hygienist has said. As you have stated, that he does not believe other testing is warranted. However, I wanna be clear. It has, we have always supported the school district and the Winters community. We are not. Uh, obstructionist to anything. We have tried to be extremely transparent, that's why you see all those emails. I think it would be. Appropriate in the best interest of everyone. For me to come back to you with a suggested. Further testing, I'm going to focus on the areas that we know were damaged. Because water didn't get in the entire building. And I, there's no basis. For there to be any conditions found anywhere outside of the affected area. Um, related to, you know, mold and so forth. And there's no indication, I wanna be very clear, there's no indication of any mold growth, active mold growth. In the areas that were affected. So I would like the opportunity to. Um, here with the hygienist and come back with a suggested protocol to do some further. Testing and I will tell you, it will include every room that was impacted by water. It will do that, every individual space.
Ms. Connie?
Thank you, but I think that if if anything, whether or not, you know, given the um. Unpredictable nature of things that have happened, I think if anything, it would make families feel comfortable and staff feel comfortable occupying the building. So that, you know, whether or not we can determine at this point is warranted or whatever. If we knew that we had a schedule of regular checkups, I think it would make our community feel. More secure and and, you know, um, I I would like to move forward on on some timeline of of intermittent checks. Along the way, even if it's just for reassurance.
Yeah, I just wanna add one other comment, um. As Ms. Grant. Um, mentioned in some of our early conversations, I was asked a question. Um, specifically with respect to mold, I think, or or some other condition. If some latent condition was discovered, some months down the road, would we still? Uh, address it on behalf of the school? And my answer was yes. So there is a timeline here that is expiring that you have to call balls and strike spy.
I I don't want any. I I I don't want, you know, any, I don't want anyone to leave here tonight. I mean, obviously, there's not, we don't have a hundred percent guarantee, but I also don't want anyone to leave here tonight feeling afraid. To send their kids to the school if we have, you know. The proper protocols in place, so I just, I don't want anyone being, you know, fearful. Leaving here as long as we can make sure that we're we're mitigating along the way and having checks.
Ms. Grant?
I think the sad thing about this whole situation is, this is a brand new school. And if it, it's. It's not even like workable, it's not fixed, it's not. It's not, it's not what we paid for, it's not what the taxpayers paid for. And. We we shouldn't, and I think that's very noble of you guys, if down the line, there's mold. That you'll come and, you know, clean it up, but we shouldn't have to worry about that. And we do have to worry about that. And it, like I said, you know, even now, we have to worry about. In in a in a month and a half, if we have a warm day in early May. We we don't even know if we're gonna have air conditioning for these kids on the third floor. Uh, you know, and so it's not just the heating. The whole heating thing, it it's bigger than that. And and that's what we can't forget. There's just, and then there's so much that still needs to be done over the summer. You know, I know Ms. Dubey shared that, um, you know. That was probably gonna be one of the schools that we would have utilized all summer. But we're gonna lose that, you know, it's, it's a lot bigger than what people think. Because of what what the expectations of this twenty first century school was gonna bring to this district. And was gonna bring to this district in September. And now we're we're on the back nine, you know, heading to the end of the, end of the school year. I think one of the kids talked about their prom coming up tonight, like, like we're talking about almost the end of the school year. And we've been working on this for so long. And it's, it's just too bad, you know?
Um, with respect to this summer. Um, the conversations that I have participated in have not indicated that the school will not be available for use this summer. We can work around it with the, it's a limited amount of work that will be done this summer. And it can be done in the course of probably a week or ten days.
Mr. Chavino? So Bill? In the, the air sampling, you indicated there is no standard for. Elevated levels, correct? There is no governmental standard for elevated levels.
That's what I've been told by the hygienist, sir, yes, sir.
And we've tested the air a couple of times, we know we have elevated levels in one room. We haven't ac- actioned on it, we haven't done anything with it, the kids are still going, the kids will be in that classroom tomorrow. There is no government standard for measurement. So. What are we gaining out of measuring air quality? Once a month for the next ten years? I I. I don't understand. If if we're getting results in one room of an elevated level, but we're not taking any action to remove the kids, to immediately get in there and. And scrub the air or whatever we do. Then to me, it seems like maybe it's not, maybe it's not a big issue. And and why are we gonna compound that by saying? We'll test the air every month. There is no, there's nothing to test it against, there is no, there is no threshold for. What's healthy air and what's not healthy air is what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's my understanding, sir, that's correct.
So I I I don't I don't know what we gain from testing the air, I guess, is is. But we say it as as some type of. Boy, we're gonna make people feel great. Well, guess what? We tested the air, we have elevated spores in one room. And the, and the room's still open for business. We gotta get off this topic.
I have to piggyback, I apologize, Jay, I'm gonna piggyback, gonna drag it out a little bit more. Mr. Chavino started and one of the things said, I'm happy he showed frustration because. We are all frustrated, but the messaging you are providing to us has me infuriated. Two weeks ago, two mu- uh, two meetings ago, someone sat there and talked about a window being open. That was debunked, why was that brought up? And then tonight? You talked about how Dyken, the VR uh F system. How it was talked about. Now, you told these leaders of this city, we are going to close it out, it was said. You guys couldn't do it. So your messaging to us who represent the families that send their children to that school. Needs to get a lot cleaner. We are taking your word on words that you said. You stated, we are going to close out the coolant system from Dyken talking to JCI. I give a lot of credit to JCI, they're here all the time, is Dyken here? Is anyone from Dyken here?
Sure, they're not, they were invited.
I'm sorry. They've been invited to every meeting that I at least had the opportunity to go to, that Kim was going to, that. Have they showed up to anything in the city of Pawtucket?
They have been at the school on various occasions and they've participated in various.
And no one knew.
Phone calls and so.
No one knew to ask them, when you get up on the ladder, to find out if you can close that out, hey.
No, no, they were here, sir, that's what.
No, no, but you guys allowed us to go out to the public and say, we are gonna close, if you ask for cooling, you can't get it. It was told to us that we can say that.
You you're correct, because when they were here, they did the procedures. That that they were told to do. And they checked and it was locked out, it was, I forget, a period of time after that. That through the active monitoring that is being done by team members, that they identified. That it, it was not blocked out. And then they reacted to that, so. The information that was shared was the information that was known and and provided. Did it change? Yes, sir, it did.
All right, I just, I want, Jay's right, we have to move on from this, but I also had to throw that out there because all of us are so frustrated. All seven leaders here, Marsha actually had something that she wanted to say about it too, because. This is, we represent this community and and the messaging, we need to be able to trust what you are saying to us. Because you are the professionals. And we're we're just looking to be given answers. Um, I know there's something I, the, doing. Answer this question, I thought you went in there to get the hygienist to retest because teachers complained about the musty odor. You guys didn't go, hey, you know what, I'm gonna send in a second test, am I, did I read that email correct?
No, you're you're correct, but there's been three rounds of tests.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
And we found out.
Right, and then, and then after the building was occupied. I know, a week later, so with some period of time later. That's when uh we were informed that there were some comments, complaints about um. A couple of rooms having a musty smell and that's what was responded to.
And we find elevated compared to the ones that was done previously when you guys did it, you know, to to make sure. So there is a little bit of validity to what Ms. Benolo was asking for. And I and I don't know, like, I agree with Jay, I don't, if there's nothing to compare it to though, but. There is a little bit to find out, is it going to different classrooms, but. We asked you to have to come back because of a smell. So I just, I find a lot of this to be very frustrating and I know you guys are frustrated too. But you are the professionals, you need to get this done. Any other?
I have one more quick question. You were going to do the data drop from the BMS system?
The BMS system?
The information that tells you the temperatures in all the classrooms, you only had it for a period of five days. And then it disappears, we had asked that. Um. If there was a way to get it downloaded so that you would have historical information?
So there's two entities where we're trying to record data, one of them is Genesis Controls BMS System. They're able to trend and record data such as space temperatures in a room, and we have a lot, we have all that data. The um, the point you were making is the Dyken system, the Dyken system has five.